Welcome, we're so glad you're all here. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure, Sheemaker.
Here.
Kellogg.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Hofstadter?
Here.
Con.
Here.
Can we have a motion to dismiss Devon Pullen, please?
So moved.
Second?
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Vaughn? Did you second it? Okay, sorry.
Here.
Yes. Who are you?
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
And Con.
Aye.
It's been a while. We haven't been.
It's been a little bit, yeah, we gotta ease it through.
Yeah, I'm a mess now.
Okay, before we do our community spotlight, I have a proclamation to read honoring Portia Louise Farmer. Whereas Portia Louise Farmer was born on September fourteenth nineteen twenty-four and will be celebrating her one-hundredth birthday this year. And whereas the village of Millersburg recognizes Louise Farmer for her longevity of life and her lifelong commitment to family, friends, and community. Whereas in consideration of Louise Farmer's longevity of life representing a century of experiences, growth, and changes, I Mayor Kelly Hoffey congratulate her on her one-hundredth birthday. Now therefore be it resolved that I Kelly Hoffey, Mayor of the Village of Millersburg in the state of Ohio, on behalf of the mayor and council and the residents of the Village of Millersburg, do hereby recognize and extend to Louise Farmer our sincere congratulations on achieving this milestone in life and further wish her all the best and continued health and happiness in the years to come. Happy birthday Louise. Um, community events, we have a bunch of things coming up. Um, this Saturday is afternoon tea with Teddy Roosevelt. Next Saturday, September twenty-first, there's a ton of things happening. Um, Art in the Berg is all day. Um, the walk in the cemetery, even though it says two PM, that time has changed to ten AM. It's from ten to twelve um in the morning. I think that was to keep the older people from having to be out in the heat. So um that walk in the cemetery will be at ten AM at the cemetery. And people can park at the school and then go across. Um, if you need a ride, there'll be somebody over there. Um, our town Millersburg Part Two will be at seven PM on September the twenty-sixth. That's a Thursday evening at um the American Hall. And the Antique Festival is coming October fifth and sixth. So that leads us into the bicentennial things having to do with the Antique Festival. Um, the parade is Sunday, October sixth. So I just started hoarding away some candy for that, so think be thinking about that, council members. Um, Mill Street Photography will do be doing pictures of elected officials on the courthouse steps Saturday, October fifth at four PM. Um, so those are the upcoming things that we have going on for the Antique Festival. Are there any visitors wish to address council at this time? No? Okay, can we have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes?
I'll second, Con.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Sheemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
And Hofstadter?
Aye.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Sheemaker, are you so moved?
I'll second.
Sheemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
All right, bill resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, are there any questions on the bills tonight? I did want everyone to happily see that the Millersburg Electric Bill for the flagpole was a little over a thousand dollars less than the quote, was two thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars, so that's great. Hearing no other questions, can we have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
I'll second, Con.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Sheemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
And Vaughn?
Aye.
All right, Nate?
All right, the Design Review Board met on the fourth. They approved the work that's going on at the hotel right now, some top planning, and then they're gonna be painting, trim around the facade of that building. Planning and zoning also met, and we had a really good discussion on the proposed legislation for freight slash storage containers in commercial zoning districts. Or I'm sorry, non-residential zoning districts is what we landed on, so it includes industrial and everything that's not residential. We'll be finalizing the legislation for that, hope to have it to you at the next meeting for your consideration. Uh, no update on the East Jones Street pole relocation. There was some crews there, did a very little amount of work on the phone lines and then left, so hopefully they show back up. I've been after them, AEP's been after them, so hopefully they can get that done soon. Melway's good either way, they just would like to wrap it up this year if possible, so we can close that project out. Uh, no updates on our projects or our capital items that we've been working on. The street sweeper, the bidder failed to meet the deadline to pay. We extended the deadline to pay, he kept giving excuses, so we said we're done and relisted the sweeper for sale. Uh, that's that auction will end the nineteenth, so hopefully we have a responsive bidder this time. We did receive notification on our annual salt contract through ODOT, the price is fifty-seven ninety a ton, it's down about five dollars from last year. That's good, and we took three order two hundred tons. Um, HDM requested permission to close Court Street and South Monroe Street for Art in the Berg on nine twenty-one. We wouldn't need a motion for that.
So moved.
I'll second.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Sheemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
And Con?
Aye.
Thank you. Ledges Drive, we had a water main hit on the twenty-sixth by a contractor doing underground boring for Bright Speed. Repairs were made to the main the next day, or actually two days later. Uh, we notified all the residents, we were able to backfeed everybody until we had to shut it down to make repairs. There was twelve residents, twelve, twelve addresses affected. Uh, I think a couple of those are vacant by the looks of things. So pretty minimal amount of residents out of water for about half a day while we made repairs. The bigger issue is the road is all pooped up and wavy. And uh, one of the driveways, for sure one, maybe two, was undermined, you could see down in the cracks, there's voids underneath. So we've got Melway lined up to come in and grind out the asphalt, so we can see how much of the base is gone. Rebuild the base, if we're able to either do like a slurry fill or something under the concrete, the curtain gutter in the driveway to save it, we will. If not, they'll have to be cut out, put new base in, and pour new. But we won't know that till the asphalt's gone, to see how much base is gone, so. They're hoping, they're busy, obviously right now with the contract work that they've got. They're hoping to be in here by the end of the month, but didn't make any promises on that, so we'll, we'll do the best we can.
So we've had a water line and a gas line hit up there?
Yeah.
Is that the same crew?
Uh, I don't believe they were.
Okay.
Like, there's so many different crews working at Bright Speed right now.
Okay.
It's, it's crazy, they're all over the place. Uh, and our line was marked, so there's no.
Clearly marked.
They thought they were twenty-one inches and they were like forty-nine inches deep. Hit right where the, the paint was and everything, it was dead center, so. Yeah, they were, they were off on their depth, otherwise they would've been fine, but these things happen. Couple thank yous to pass out, Millersburg Christian Church did some paintwork here at the office, touching up the new wood, trimming around the base or the poles. And then that little strip of brick that was driving me crazy is, is now painted, looks tremendous, I appreciate that. Uh, Millersburg Brewing, we got a letter in the mail and a check for like a hundred and sixty-four dollars or something like that. Uh, it's a donation from their trivia night. They designated it, well, I think they tried to give it towards Brenna's project at the amphitheater. That's all complete, but the sign up there needed some maintenance, it was starting to get some mildew. So that's my next thank you. Caleb Miller came, I called him, they were the ones that built the sign originally. He came in and sanded it on Labor Day, actually, and um it's prepped for refinishing. He sent me the material that we need to use on that timber. I've got it ordered, it just hasn't arrived yet, and then we'll get that sealed up, so it should be good. Couple other things that weren't on my report that I wanted to pass on. Uh, truck signs that we've talked about in past meetings. We've put new, the street department put new signs up down at uh, South Matt Anthony, at Smith and Beat Street. There's no truck going up both of those streets, and then there's a truck route pointing out to Jackson, out to thirty-nine. It's very obvious now, I mean, it should be very obvious. We've got signs ordered for this intersection that'll go up on the signal, Mass Arms. Uh, we'll have one on each side of Jackson Street. So coming from the east and west, there'll be a sign up there with a no-through truck symbol with arrows pointing north and south. We've got. Rod, do you know where the signs up on Port Washington yet, no-through trucks?
Not yet.
I think township did theirs, right, or is that?
Yeah, we did.
The township did their, and we're gonna put some on the Jackson, put a sign there as well. There've been an awful lot of commercial trucks on Port Washington Road. So kind of talking and working with the township on that as well. And then we got the bus parking signs in. We're gonna get one installed in front of the carry house. We're starting with one if we see there's need for more. Thought is we put one up permanent, and then if we know there's two buses coming, we can, we can set up a temporary post right behind it, so there'd be virtually six spaces used up over there. I believe that's all, oh, I wanted to pass, or were you gonna, I guess I'll let you thank the street department for the other day, yeah, I'll let you handle that. I guess I'll add, thank you.
Nate, what, what if anything do we need to do to let the tour bus companies know that there is available parking?
So typically, the, I can't think of the name, the one up at the Victorian House, there's a Sarah. I don't know what the business, I can't think what the name of the business is, Sarah usually would call when they knew they had a bus coming. Or the Mark or somebody would call and say, hey, we've got the Chamber is another one, and would know if a bus was coming sometimes. So I'm gonna reach out to all those people.
Okay.
Let us know when there's buses coming still, but let them know that, hey, there's now a designated parking space for them. If you need more, we can do that, but there's definitely one for one there.
Okay.
Historic downtown Millersburg might be able, she might tell them, might be able to.
She might, yeah.
Be able to put something.
Yeah.
On there to let people know, let them know.
Yeah.
So if it's designated and out there permanently, we really don't need to know, it's more just letting them know that's where it's at.
Right.
They can spread the word to the bus.
Right.
Tour groups. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Chief?
A few things, um, first, Kelly Hoffey probation ended on August twenty-sixth, since we have a council meeting bringing up now, um, so I'd like to request that he can remove from probation to uh, full-time status. He definitely is a benefit, um, you know, he, he helps out a lot when he can. And I give compliments, um, not only from inter-office, but other, other agencies, Sheriff's Office will make comments about him, so he is definitely a benefit to the department.
I'll make the motion removing from probationary status.
I'll second. Sheemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Thank you, um, just a reminder, this Saturday, uh, the truck parade will be rolling through town. Um, they're supposed to be at the fairgrounds by six-thirty, so we're guessing somewhere around six o'clock. Um, they did some things to kind of slow themselves down, since last year they were, they were way early. Um, traffic will be delayed, we will keep eastbound, and anybody that's traveling east wants to go south, but anybody on the north side of the road, you're probably gonna get stuck until all the trucks roll through. We're not doing a complete shutdown like we do, would do with the normal parade. Um, next thing is Logan Choze, he's our newest patrolman, he started a week ago this past Saturday. Um, seems to be doing good, seems to be very energetic, is, is a, is like a sponge, wanna learn everything that it can, so wrap it in a board. And last, I wanna say thanks to Pat and the street guys, uh, for the day of the fire. They were, they were, Jim Strauss was already on, I don't know how many other people were at different locations, uh, setting up signs and helping with directing the traffic. We had a, somebody moved a sign up on two forty-one, and the three of us that were on, we couldn't get out to go move the sign to correct it, so um, we ended up calling Jim Miller in, he drove by me, checked on me, made sure I didn't need anything. Uh, so I just wanna pass on a, a thanks to those guys for helping out, and that's it.
Thank you. Bobby?
All right, so the acknowledgement for the August financials is floating around here somewhere, I laid it on the table.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
Haven't seen it? Is it gone?
It's longer, I sat it over at the first or second, anyway, we'll find it before the, or after the meetings, and then we'll just have you assign it, so. Um, you should have received those by email, right? Okay. Um, GoGov, it is almost time to renew our GoGov, that's our app that we got about a year ago. So I just wanted to make sure, the price did increase a little, of course, everything always does. So uh, for a one-year contract, um, the total price would be four thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars. Um, and that is, uh, that's due in November, so the new contract period, the new license period would be from uh, November first to October thirty-first of next year. Just wanted to make sure you guys were happy with that app and make sure you wanted to renew that contract.
What was the old contract amount, just out of curiosity?
I think it was around thirty-six hundred, I knew you were gonna ask that as soon as I sat down, I should've had it today, I should've looked it up, but it, it did go up a little bit, yeah.
Because everybody's.
Yeah, I've not seen anything go down, that's for sure, so.
Everybody happy with that?
Okay, yeah. Um, next would be, I made a, um, a real slight change to our life insurance policy that we have for our employees. Um, it had a strange, um, everything else runs calendar year, and for whatever reason, our life insurance policy ran um, through September. So it always had an October renewal date, and that didn't make any sense to me, so I worked with our, which kind of is a segue into my, into the next part, I talked to our Huntington representative. Um, we, we of course had, Huntington had some changes in staffing, so um, the two gals that we relied on uh, for our contact, they have, they've moved on, so uh, we have a new contact person, and her and I talked, and she actually noticed this, that our renewal date um, was kind of, kind of odd. Um, so we actually were able to um, to lock in our same rate and just extend that like three extra months, so that everything will come due at the same time you hear now, so that's kind of handy. Just wanted to let you know I did that, no change in cost um, to the life insurance. And then, uh, lastly, um, Huntington, I hadn't heard anything from them, um, so I reached out and talked to our new representative, and they are working on um, employee health insurance and dental insurance rates. Um, they should get those out to us, we should have those by the end of the month to have an idea of what we're looking at. Hopefully, everybody, cross your fingers and toes that those rates come out back good, otherwise, uh, we'll, we'll be looking at, at kind of reaching out, bending out, doing questionnaires, and trying to find coverage that's affordable, so. That is it for me.
All right, thank you. Bob?
Uh, the only thing I have to report is the indigent burial policy. Hopefully I put the uh, final touches on that, it's, I sent it to Chad Yoder, uh, who is the attorney for the volunteer guardianship program and Judge Lee, and waiting to hear from them.
Okay, so, thank you.
Can you bring us up to date about the s- street Walmart and the rental thing, is that something we can talk about yet?
Um, yeah, well, we, we got, uh, we were contacted quite a few times about that. I have not made any contact with Walmart or uh, you know, they're the ones that are supposed to do it. Nate, I'm not sure if you have or not, uh, but yeah, it, I was just down there today and didn't learn any markings on the.
He told us, when we talked to him a few months ago, that it takes a long time for the corporate office to get anything done.
Right.
But you responded to prosecutor then, or?
I did.
Okay.
I did, uh, and yeah, and Kelly also responded, so, yeah.
And I responded.
Okay.
All right, is that all, Bob?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Um, upcoming committee meetings, uh, just a reminder, our next meeting on September twenty-third, there's a public hearing at six-fifty for the zoning, so just remember to be here a little early for that. Our letter to West Holmes Schools, so at the last council meeting, we had decided to go to the council meeting. The next day I met with the superintendent, had a very good discussion with him. Um, his suggestion was what, that, that we mail the letters to West Holmes. Um, we have been discussing this letter since the beginning of July, so I'm hoping that all of you agree that it's okay for me to go ahead and send those letters. Is there any discussion on that?
Well, I was at the Business and Housing Committee as a visitor when Brad and Brent had agreed to send the letter. So then, I don't know what happened at the last council meeting, I guess, Tom, I guess I need to know why Tom doesn't wanna send the letter. Devon's not here.
I didn't know they didn't want to send the letter.
I think you wanted it to be hand-delivered, I think that's.
Why do you want it hand-delivered?
I just felt it was better to present it to the board than to mail it.
They already know the letter exists.
Well, now they can, yes, they didn't at that point in time.
I don't understand, I guess you need to explain to me what, what, I know that you're involved with Nashville, so I, I need to understand what's going on.
Not really.
What, you, but at the, at the Housing and Business meeting, you guys both said to send, not hand-deliver. Then we had a council meeting, and then you agreed with hand-deliver, so I'm confused, I mean, I don't, I, I don't, I'm confused here. I don't know why we just don't send a letter to them.
At the last council meeting, we decided that we were gonna.
But at the Business and Housing Committee meeting that they sit on, they were fine, I mean, Dan is here, he was, I was sitting in the audience.
No, I personally didn't care how the letter got to the board members. Um, mailing it was a suggestion that I made, and then Tom indicated, I think his preference was to hand-deliver it, and I thought, well, if that's the case, that's fine. So bottom line, I didn't really care how it got to the board members. But that's, that's my recollection of what happened.
We don't have recording of it either. What's, why do we want it hand-delivered? Cause I, I, why, why is hand-delivering, what's, what's the importance of that?
I just thought if, if we took it to the meeting and they had any questions or any comments, we would be there versus blindly, blindly mailing the letter.
Are you okay with mailing it now?
Yeah, I mean, it was in the newspaper, apparently.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they, but they, they've had it.
It had come out in the packet back in, I mean, it came out.
Yeah, it came out in the beginning of July in the meeting, it was public record then. So, is everyone okay with me mailing it? Brent?
Yeah.
I am, yeah.
Bob, you're good with that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Tom, you're good?
They're waiting for it.
Okay, they are, okay, I'll send it, thank you all.
Do we have to vote on that, or?
Let's, let's vote on that, let's go ahead. Can we have a motion to mail it?
I'd like a motion to mail the letters.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Was that you, Bob? Kellogg?
Yes.
Sheemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any committee reports?
Uh, we had a tree committee meeting a couple weeks ago, and Nate and Chad and Kim Kellogg are working on the, the list of uh, activities for this fall, there'll be several tree removals, some trimming, and then some planting, so they are working on that.
Sounds like a lot's happening.
Yes.
That's great. Okay.
Some of the removals happened already, right, Rod?
Yeah, thanks, Steve, they removed three of the smaller ones already.
And those the ones down by the pool?
Yeah, one little depot and the, the.
Okay, very good.
Awesome, thank you. I also wanted to thank the um, Nate Skolmach and the Water Sewer Department. When the water main broke, they got out there very quickly, got the jet-vac truck out there. Everybody that was down there, I went down there, everybody was very impressed with the jet-vac truck. And uh, they got it shut down and got water back up very quickly, it, it was very nice, they did a good job, so thank you. Um, legislation, we have four different things to read tonight. Our first one is third reading by title only, third reading and passage of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero five, and ordinance amending the zoning map zone territory of the village of Millersburg, are there any questions?
Which one is that?
This is Big Ten Properties on South Crawford Street.
Oh, okay.
Into, going back to the duplex that it was. Any other questions? Can we have a motion to pass?
So moved.
I'll second.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Sheemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
All right, then we have the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero six by title only, and ordinance revising speed limits in the village of Millersburg, are there any questions? No, all right, we have the second reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero seven by title only, and ordinance revising one-one-six-six-point-zero-three of the village ordinances, are there any questions?
Again, which one is this?
The housing density.
Any other questions? All right, we have second reading, second reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero eight by title only, and ordinance revising the village's water billing practices, are there any questions? Okay, anybody have any old business?
On the closing out the alleys that we went through, I forgot where we're at on that, did that have to be a public hearing, or what was it?
We did, that was back June, July.
July?
To retrieve a legislation on that, um, then it needs to be recorded. Not sure where we're at with that.
Okay, the reason I'm asking that there's supposed to be a right-of-way with those. The homeowners or whatever on each side of the alley start paying real estate taxes, a portion of it. So if they're, can they charge the person that wants the right-of-way to go over their property? That's a question for you.
No, no, it had, in the ordinance, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it says that they uh, maintain, anybody who needs ingress and egress uh, has, maintains that, they keep that.
So they could charge them?
No, no.
Okay.
And we, we retain a need right-of-way.
And we also do, yeah, but also the.
Does that extend to other utilities, though? Or would they have to negotiate those, like if the cable company came through and wanted to go underground through that area?
It's just utilities, it's, yeah, so it does not state, it wouldn't be like a blanket easement like on the streets and all that sort of thing. It would just be.
Is that what you're?
Yeah, more or less, I mean, if you're paying the real estate taxes and somebody's gonna use it as a right-of-way, why do they pay the real estate tax on it?
Well, it would only be the two contiguous, the two contiguous owners.
Right.
Would have the right to ingress and egress, but not just any Joe Blow, it would have to be.
The homeowners?
Yeah.
Right, that's what I was gonna take that, yeah, for property owners.
Right.
Any other questions?
What, what happened with the dumpster situation?
Well, a big thanks to Millersburg Christian Church, they donated a dumpster.
Okay.
Went down there, got it cleaned up pretty quickly. And then the trailer park got another dumpster down there after that, but both dumpsters are gone and all of that mess is cleaned up.
Okay, very good.
So, that's good, yep. Any other old business?
When Mrs. Smith was here, did she get satisfied with the gas thing or the galvanized?
I gave her a call because I had received a phone call, she was here on Monday night, I received a phone call on Friday. I had called Northeast Ohio Gas, I had called Randy a couple of times that week, him and I had discussed, and he was talking to his people to try and figure out what we could do. By the end of the week, Northeast Ohio Gas said that they would not require people to change galvanized pipe in older homes. By the end of the weekend, they're not gonna require anybody to change your galvanized pipe, no matter if you have a new home or an old home. So, they, they changed their stance on that, and I called her and she was very happy about that.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the status of that, so it doesn't matter how old your house is, no, you won't be required to change your galvanized pipe. Now, we do have some people that already had to do that, and I'm really sorry about that, but I didn't, I didn't know that at the time.
But they obviously didn't pass the pressure test, so it was a safety issue, I mean, either way.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I've warned everybody.
That's the underlying.
Get those, get a test ahead of time.
Right. So, I'm sorry, I feel.
I know, Mr. Schachluss.
Yes.
That was one thing I wanted to talk about was Northeast Ohio Gas. We're coming into the winter months, and there are some walls on the books that they cannot shut the person off from November to April. Thing is, if they come along and say, okay, we're gonna shut you down Friday at three o'clock, till you get somebody to fix that, maybe on Friday or Saturday, and they'll come back on Monday and maybe turn you on if everything is okay. Can somebody put the pressure on Northeast Ohio Gas to get some answers? And have some kind of a representative here to at least tell the people where they're at? How many, how many more, are they gonna be done by November?
I hope so.
If we have to get into a cold spell, then we're gonna have problems. And I think the, the people in the village would like to know what's going on with Northeast Ohio Gas, and they don't even send a representative. And it's happened with all of our utilities, not only the gas company, but these other jerks are putting these cables in. They don't have any representation from the company themselves, it's all contracts. If the state puts something out on contract, they send an inspector out. And I think it needs to start here, and if nobody here can do it, I think there's some law firms out that have already tackled these agencies before and are not afraid to come forward, and if they would like to come forward, they need to come and let people know that they're out there and that they would handle the situation, but some of the utilities need to be required. It's like the telephone call out there on, on Joe Street. Here it are, if, if they wanted us to do something or the village to do something, they would demand it to be done now. And if you wanna dig, you gotta work it now. So I think somebody needs to put the pressure on the utility companies, whether it comes from here or whether we have to look to somebody outside that's dealt with them before and can put pressure on. And that was my comment for the night, I'm sorry.
No, that you're, we can, we can get a Northeast Ohio rep in here to find out where they are in their, in their, um.
I just think before the cold weather sets in.
Yeah.
We need to find out, and if, are they gonna be done by November? And if they require a shut-off in that period of time, who's gonna be responsible?
I do know that at the time, when, when was yours?
Yeah, that, well, and I was just gonna say a couple of things, so do you remember years ago when American Electric had done some work and, and Electric got shut off? And I felt, I think after that is when we get the text message, it was maybe ten years ago. It was on a Saturday, Electric gets shut off, they were doing maintenance, after that, we get the text message. So I can tell you that you called KUKO, and, and I had done all that. And then a lawyer, then they said you could get a lawyer to represent all those people, well, good luck finding that lawyer, cause somebody has to pay that lawyer. So, a lot of bunch of people aren't gonna wanna pay a law firm, but that law you said, they shut my, they shut me off, I was shut off.
And yours was April, was yours April? I'm thinking it was April, why?
It was early, it was cold too.
It was cold still.
Well, the thing is, if they shut you off, and then you don't get turned on to Monday.
Well, I do know that there, uh, cause the reason I wanted to know is because at the same time that Andrea had hers, that they, the gas line up by Glenwood Apartments broke, well, there was a gentleman that lived up in, back in there, and he was on vacation. And when he got home in the middle of the night, I had him call, and they came out in the middle of the night and turned him back on, got him relit.
And that's, you know, that's another thing that they need to do, because sometimes they'll say, well, we'll be there nine, five. Somebody has to take all the work to be at the house so that they come, and they don't come till quarter to five.
Yeah, I had, I had a thirteen hundred dollar plumber bill waiting, I had two plumbers waiting for them to come back.
Yeah.
Now, Northeast Ohio Gas, I will say give them some credit because, probably because I'm married to a boy. But, I'm not saying they'll do that for everybody.
But yeah, we can, that's a good idea, we can get a, get, get somebody in here and find out where they're at in that and how, how much longer they're gonna do it.
Yeah.
This year.
You know, nobody seems to know where they're at in town, they just jump.
They're all over the place.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been waiting for them to come for me.
Yeah, me too.
I still think if people would just listen, I still think if people would just have a plumber come to their house, their houses are older, and just have them do a pressure, I mean, then they could get on it. I, I really, I mean, I realize it, but that, that expense is cheaper than getting shut off and then not having.
Well, I guess some people got an old furnace, an old hot water tank.
I know.
It can't get parts for them. Our sort of people here in the community seem to jump on things, but in wintertime, they can do other things.
I agree.
So, I, we need to manage them.
I can tell you this much, I have a friend who owns a gas company, close, small one. And when this happens to them, they literally bring electro heaters to the people and, and, and take care of their clients, but I can't say that I'll let them do that.
Thank you. So, um, I gave you guys each these little packets that say the Village of Millersburg welcomes you. So in the past, there's been kind of a distance between the businesses and the local government here in Millersburg. HDM and the Chamber are partnering, partnering with all the businesses to more economically be able to advertise in our best hometown issue. So, this is my Ohio magazine, this is, this one just came out. So the, the issue that's gonna have Millersburg across the front is gonna be the November, December issue, okay? And then it'll, it'll have a picture of, they had people come into town taking pictures, so I don't know what it'll be on the front, but it'll say Millersburg. Now, part of the promotion for best hometown is, the requirement is, the inside cover, the back cover, and the back inside cover are required to be purchased. Now, the most expensive one is the back cover, and because you had asked for prices, I gave everybody the price list, the regional back cover. So, this is half-price, normally the regional back cover is ten thousand dollars for an issue of Ohio magazine, okay? But because we're best hometown, we get half-price, so the Chamber bought the back cover for five thousand and sixty dollars, okay? So, what HDM is doing is, in the middle, there's gonna be a like three, four-page article about Millersburg and why it's the best hometown. In the middle of that, there's going to be a bunch of ads, and so Taylor has made it so it'll be eat here, and then it'll have six ads for six local restaurants. Play here, it'll have shop here, stay here, and it'll have ads for all these local businesses in, within the magazine. So, a whole bunch of our local businesses are putting out their own money to advertise in our best hometown issue, okay? So, I thought that in order for us to bridge that divide, we should show the business owners that we want them to succeed just as much as they wanna succeed, and if they're willing to put money into this issue to promote Millersburg, we will also put money into this issue to promote Millersburg. I was thinking the inside front cover, and Taylor came up with this, I wanted to show you guys, so that we didn't have to pay someone to come up with an ad. So, this would be, it would say Millersburg on the front, and when you open the inside cover, it would be the Village of Millersburg welcomes you. That would be on the inside cover here, okay? So, I just, I think we should take the inside front cover, I think it'll help show the businesses that we support them. I talked to Bobby, and the, as you can see, there, it, it's the regional second cover is the inside front cover, and that's four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And so I talked to Bobby, and she found that money, and I, I just think that we should support them with more than lip service, and especially with something that this is just gonna happen one time, it's not gonna be a reoccurring thing. So I wanted to know what you guys thought about that.
Well, my feelings is, I think we should support them because I've heard nothing but, excuse me, bitching since I've been on council that we do nothing for the merchants, so, yes.
I think we should support it.
I do too.
Tom? Yeah. Can we have a motion to do this ad on the inside front cover of our November, December issue?
I'll second. Von?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye, I just would like to say I wish the jail was in that picture too. I wish it was the front of the courthouse, the front of the soldier, cause you got Lady Justice on the top, that's my old life.
We could change it.
Yeah, could she do the picture?
We could change it.
Yeah, when she charged to.
No.
She wouldn't.
No.
Oh, that's a good idea.
You wanna do the front?
Yeah.
And have the jail?
And Lady Justice, that's a great idea.
Yeah, does everybody agree? We can change that, that's easy, okay?
That's a great idea.
Okay, we'll do the front. Front of the courthouse.
She took that picture?
Yep.
That's a nice picture, I just think the other would be better.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that, and I will, once she gets that, I will send that to everyone so you can all see, okay? Does that sound good? All right, thank you very much.
What are your thoughts about having three pictures here and one of being like an angled shot of the village hall, I mean, it is Millersburg.
Yeah, we can do that, okay.
We're smoking now.
Yeah, all right, bring on the ideas, I love it.
I like that too.
Yeah.
Just don't ask me colors.
No, that's good having the, I like that.
Yeah, we can do that, especially now that it looks really nice, right?
It'd be important if I were to.
I guess it wouldn't be kosher to also show where the public restrooms are because nobody always asks.
There's a picture everywhere right there.
That's why it's in the angle.
Yeah, 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 no, that's great, we can do that, that's easy. Thank you all, that's, I'm really excited about that, there's gonna be different places in town that are going to purchase, I, I'm hoping that, that we can get a case, and you, anybody will be able to get these for five dollars, just when, when the Millersburg one comes out, so I think that'll be awesome. All right, any other old business? New business? I want to go ahead early and thank Millersburg Christian Church, their day of service, they're going to be painting some of our fire hydrants. So that will look very nice, I'm excited about that.
They did.
They, you did already? Was your day of service already? I'm sorry, I totally missed it. That's when you painted the front? Okay, well, thank you, thank you for that, that's awesome.
Did they get with you with the fire hydrant that has the hornet nest? There's one that's half-painted because of the hornet.
I completely understand, I'm a nest at home that I got lit up on. Yep. You live nowhere.
I'll, I'll find out from Cazmar, man.
We know enough paint will take care of that too.
That would surprise you when you're starting to paint then, whoo.
The other thing I would like to say is volunteers from the Christian church also unloaded that dumpster down.
Yeah.
And when I went down there and looked at it, it's like, I told Tom, I said, hey buddy, there is a special place in heaven for you folks.
That's right.
To take that, and I can imagine what it was in there.
Yeah.
And put it in the other dumpster, yeah. Amazing, I, I, I would have painted a hundred hydrants myself.
There's, he would have painted your hornet.
Throw in the hornet's nest, man. Dipsy dumpster, not too much.
That's great. This Saturday, Dan Barry is having a harvest fest from one to four, they're gonna have some, lots of fun little things. I'm going to be in the dump tank from three to four, so if anyone wants to come dunk me, Chad? Come on down, come on down, buddy. I have one thing for new business, I just got this today, so I'm just gonna read this, and then we will do more discussion on it at our next council meeting. It's a letter from Critchfield, it says, dear Mayor Hoffey, we represent Precision Cannabis Products LLC, which is owned by Steve McCrossan. Mr. McCrossan plans to purchase and develop vacant land in the Village of Millersburg. He would like to operate a recreational marijuana dispensary on said land. We believe this is a wonderful opportunity for the village, this business would allow vacant land to be developed and increase village tax dollars through new revenue streams. The many benefits of a recreational marijuana dispensary in the village are outlined in the attached memorandum. However, Village of Millersburg Ordinance seven-zero-three point zero-one prohibits marijuana cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries within the village boundaries. We ask this ordinance be repealed by the village council and be voted on at the next council meeting. With the legalization of recreational marijuana in the state of Ohio, we believe by repealing this ordinance, the Village of Millersburg can usher in a new era of business, employment, and tourist opportunities and tax revenue. So we will continue that discussion at the next council meeting.
Wasn't the only ordinance that we passed was against medicinal marijuana?
That was, that was the intent, but the way it's phrased, it also covers recreational. So that, that ordinance, in my legal opinion, would have to be repealed.
So Bob, I have a question about that. So, I've been asked a question, I wasn't quite sure how to respond to it, but at what point does village council make decisions for something like this versus putting it on a ballot?
You, you can put it on the ballot, yeah, you, you could, you could do that.
So what's the expense?
Well, if it's, you know, during a regular election, it wouldn't be any expense, but if it, if it's a special election, then we'd have to pay for it.
We pay for it to people that want the.
Think about it.
If they, does, who wants to put this?
Oh, well, I mean, I think whoever promotes that, I think it would be the village that would put that on the ballot. We would be responsible for it, but in this case, I would think McCrossan would pay the bill if it was a special election.
So if it was a normal spring or fall election?
Right.
Okay, so that might be an idea if council wanted to put it on the ballot and let the people decide.
Probably too late to get it on for November now.
Yeah, it'd be too late now, but spring, it would be okay for spring. So, that's, that's an option as well. Any other new business?
So this also prompted me to think about something else, was there a Narcan distribution here a couple of weeks ago down at Airport Park? Okay, so my question is, how did, how did that get approved?
They called.
Go ahead.
So, a person from the Health Department called me, said she'd talked to Chief Shager, they had an officer lined up to be with them, asked about being at the park in my response, so it was that Friday, that kind of Friday, so there wasn't any council meetings between then and now. I said, well, it's a public park, I can't tell you you can't be there, so.
So that raises my next question, which, and I understand that, and that makes sense. So, in council meetings prior, we've had a number of things that have been brought up that we've been asked to authorize, whether it's an Easter egg hunt or whatever. Do we have to do that? If you have the authority to make those decisions, can you just go ahead and make those decisions? Um, do we have to do that? If you have the authority to make those decisions, can you just go ahead and make those decisions?
Well, I, I feel like my answer was very intentional in not saying, yeah, go for it. I didn't give permission. I just said, well, it's a public park.
I think, I think a lot.
But I'm confused.
I guess should I, should we just, in the future, any request, should I just say, oh, I'm sorry if your event's scheduled before the next meeting, like, you have to wait, you have to postpone until after council meets?
Can he do it?
No, I, I think, I think what happened was fine. But then it, it prompted me to think about things that we've authorized in the past. And I guess that the question really is, do we need to, you know, authorize that, or is that just something you can do, Nate?
No, a lot of, like, typical reservations, we don't even bring to you. A lot of them we don't bring to you. When they're requesting waiver fees, like reservation, like electrical fees for the parks, lighting, that kind of thing, then we bring it to you. Um, Mary's got a schedule in her office for the different ball fields, the amphitheater now. Um, we're not doing pickleball reservations yet. I'm sure it's coming at some point. So a lot of people, if they want to reserve like the pavilion, a deer run for a birthday party, that doesn't come to you guys because they're not requesting any waiver of fees or anything like that. The Paul Laney Memorial Tournament that we bring every year, they're at the ask and we don't charge them.
Okay.
Because they're using lights and concessions and all that.
If, if they come to you and ask, does that guarantee them exclusive use of the facility?
Not really, no. We put up signs, we put up notices that this facility is reserved. Like it's the pavilion or a ball field or something like that, but I don't know if we've ever had an issue. I'm sure if somebody was wanting to use the park, that would be a tough. It's a public park.
It is.
You can't really tell anyone they can't be there, in my opinion.
But Brad, in, in answer to your question maybe, I don't know of any state law or municipal ordinance that requires, that gives Nate the authority or not the authority to approve an Easter egg hunt at, you know, the park or, or whatever. It's, in my mind, it's all based on tradition, what's happened in the past, you know? And, uh, so that's sort of what we have, but, and Nate and I talked about this. Maybe it's time to put some, some rules together, what Nate can approve and what he can't approve. Because this Narcan thing came up, and, you know, some people, I don't know, I don't know why they would, but might object to, you know, the dispensing of Narcan because, you know, like, you could argue that it's promoting drug abuse. Um, so, you know, I, to cover Nate, and so that, you know, good fences make good neighbors. Uh, maybe it's time that we put that in writing, what, what he can improve and what he shouldn't improve.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't have any issue with things that we've authorized in the past. I think they've all been good things. Um, you know, I, at what point does it need to come to village council? There's nothing, you know, that prohibits Nate from making those decisions, and it sounds like maybe that needs to be clarified, that maybe we need to allow him some more discretion on that stuff.
And, and one, you know, when me and I are talking, this is like, you know, he, he has the authority to spend, what is it, up to fifty thousand dollars?
Like seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand dollars, and the amount keeps on going up and up, you know? Uh, but he can spend seventy-five thousand dollars without your consent or approval. He wo, he wouldn't, but he can.
Maybe once.
So, you know, why, why can't he give authority to the church to have an Easter egg hunt down there, you know, that sort of thing?
That's my point.
Yeah.
In all of this.
I think part of that might be publicity by being announced in village council, meaning that there's a community Easter egg hunted too. As opposed to permission, it's more getting word out.
Right, that's true too. That's true too.
Any other new business? All right, bring it on, Dave.
Okay, uh, there was mention of new sidewalks. Is that going to be in the downtown area? Uh, the trees in the downtown area stink.
We know.
All of the berries and everything else. I had an opportunity to go to the tree committee the other week, middle of the day. And I'm not satisfied with them because I thought the tree committee was supposed to review what type of trees and what kind of things should be put out there. And they turned right around and put three more of them over the trees up in the extension office up there. They planted three more. They're going to drop all the berries on there. Again, I think the merchant should have the opportunity to say, I want a tree in front of my business, I don't want a tree in front of my business. Some of them are already taking the opportunity of putting pot and flowers out and, and little things that look a lot better and save them a lot of trouble in the wintertime. They don't have to push the snow up, you know, around a tree, can't get out of your car because of the tree. There was also a mention that, oh, we ought to put trees in the cemetery. We took a lot of the trees down that were dead. You've got to add there a section that has to mow around all those headstones. Then you go up and plant a tree every twenty-five or fifty feet apart, so you've got to go around all those and trim them. The maintenance part of that is plant the trees around the end. Plant a group of trees, but don't plant them so that they have more hours to spend mowing around and trimming around them. And that's what I thought, you know, there has to be some other kind of tree out there besides that. These look like the leftovers from the nursery.
Yes, they do.
Everybody buy.
Everybody hates them.
And they're not. And I complained about the trimming. If you walk right up there at the end of this tree and look north, you'll see two trees. One hanging all over the place, and the other one growing from the root all the way up to the top. So now I excuse myself and I'm done for the season.
I thought we discussed this issue a while back.
We did.
About the berry trees. They're going to get rid of them.
Well, I mean, that's part of the, that would be part of the plans, are redoing the, the trees when that happens. And, and as you were told at that meeting, Dave, the, the new varieties that they're planting, the berries tend to hang on them as well. So you don't have the mess that you did in the past. And also the people have the option, if they don't want it in front of their business, they are able to turn that down. So they're not forcing trees on people. And a lot of the, and some of those like.
All the trees trapped, berries all trapped in the house or in the business. And they fall off sooner or later. The leaves are bad enough, but the berries are terrible.
Okay. So you prompted me to think of something else. So thank you, Mr. Schott.
I think there's something, something out there that could be, you know, other towns plant trees that don't have that problem.
Well, I, I've been asked by Commercial and Savings Bank to address the two trees that are in the parking lot on Clay Street. They're an obstruction of the view as people are coming out onto Clay Street. And I've addressed it a few different times. I don't know if anything's gotten done with it, but. We, we've talked about that at our tree meeting, actually. The trees are still there. Well, if, if. And the one tree, the one tree's about, I mean, I could probably push it down. Um, it's, it's that bad. I'm curious, have you driven through that parking lot and pulled it out? To, to see how much it blocks your view? I've, I've walked there on the corner. Okay. And I've heard, I've heard several people complaining about it. Because, because I know when we, when I heard complaints about it, I drove over, then I drove through, and I thought, if you actually come to a complete stop before you pull out of the parking lot, it's not a issue. I think, I think somebody needs to speak to, and I'll give you a name after the meeting. Somebody needs to follow up with it, because I've addressed it three, maybe four times, and nothing's gotten done. And it needs to be looked into.
What, excuse me, what about the big tree, the, the big tree down on Glen Drive in Port Washington, and the big limb fell off of it? Is that considered on the right-of-way? Or is that something, the rest of that tree ought to come down because it's rotten all the way down through? And.
Do you know a tree that is?
Whether anybody needs to make a judgment on that or not, but, I don't.
That's a good question.
Have to look at it. Brad, I, I looked at those trees. I had a couple of people from the bank call me about it. And honestly, I had the same response as Brad. I went over and drove through. And I didn't feel it was a visibility issue pulling out of there, so I didn't push it any further. They may have grown since then, you know, may now, if they pushed out further, maybe it is now, but when I went over there, I didn't think it was a concern.
They don't, they don't want them there.
Can I say something?
That's fine, but I was told it was a visibility issue.
Well, that's what I was told too.
If it's a visibility issue, that's fine. That's one thing versus them just not wanting them.
Well, I think it's, it's a combination of, but I think, I think you need to speak. I'll, I'll give you a contact person after the meeting, and, um, I think it's somebody that you need to follow up on, and you guys can work it out.
Sure.
You know, sometimes your test is if you're in a lower car.
Sure.
A higher car. So that test of you, of driving through could be, they have a lower car, with, lower person, sometimes that can matter. I mean, if it's, if it's a safety thing, and I guess I agree with Brad, when people, people need to know that they're heard. They need to know that when they're addressing a council person, they need to know that it's being addressed.
Is it, is it the car issue, or is it their employees crossing the street? That they can't see, not those trees? Because they come across that street like crazy.
I, I think it's the vehicle.
I believe it's the vehicle.
They sit back. The trees are behind the sidewalk, so if you're crossing the street, they should.
I know. I mean, there's no crosswalk, but they walk across the whole time.
Dave, I, I'll double-check, but that tree on Port Washington, I believe, is outside of the right-of-way. It's actually in the township.
Sits back off the right-of-way?
Yeah. The way it looks on here. I'll double-check.
Well, you know, between Washington and, and it's either the township or the village.
Right.
Rod, you, we might need to get you on that. Good thing you're here.
You stayed too long, Rod.
Any other new business? Any visitors wish to address council? Okay, can I have a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hossetter?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Yes.
Thank you all so much for coming.